Let's call this March 18th meeting of the Eugene Planning Commission to order. The first item on the agenda is public comment. We have two people who have signed up to comment. Just as a reminder, I need to ask you not to speak anything that a public hearing has been closed about or is scheduled for. So with that, three minutes each. Paul Conti, if you would please come to the table and give your name and address for the record.
My name is Paul Conti. I live at 1461, excuse me, West 10th Avenue, and I'm getting over a little bronchitis, so my voice is a little scratchy. Good to see those of you that don't know here today, it's been a little while, and that's been a relief for me and probably for you as well. I wanted to first, I came down for another more significant purpose, but I wanted to first mention to you that there have been some questions about the settlement that Kepstone and I reached in terms of the three appeals that I had brought, and there's a very good article in the February issue of Blue Chip Magazine written by John Brown that goes into the background of it. John and I spent quite a few hours providing him information, and if you know him, you know he's not easily fooled or doesn't tolerate fools very easily, but that'll give you some background. And also wanted to invite you that if you want information about, if you have any questions you've heard some rumors that you may have some concerns about, just call me or email me, and just like with John, I really appreciate that he did that, sat down and had a great covering about it. The other thing is Randy actually asked me a question coming in, you know, did the settlement address the things you appealed? Well, it did in part and in two regards, the alley vacation and the TIA. It didn't really resolve the issue on appeal with the MPT, which is the council illegally approved that MPT without complying with an Oregon statute that requires them to make a land use decision that the project will be in compliance with their metro and refinement plans. Indications are that the city manager is going to continue down that same road again. So just to give you a heads up, this week or next, I will file a petition to have LCDC order the city to obey the statutes, and I think that's unfortunately necessary to get them to straighten it out. The city will have 60 days to respond, and then I'll decide whether to take it on to the hearing at LCDC. As you know, council has suspended the MPT program beginning about April 1st for three months, and part of the demand upon the city will be that they follow the law when they evaluate the core campus proposal, and that they change the MPT regulations to comply. And then the last thing, the thing I really wanted to mention to you is that I hope you will take a close look and compare the South Willamette study with the EWEB study. The EWEB study was a really well-done professional job that relied on actual practical analysis. It may require public funds, it may not happen, but it is a bare piece of land, relatively bare piece of land, that has a potential to be developed, and the money was put into it by EWEB, and it's a worthy and well-done project. It's the exact opposite of the South Willamette concept project. It's completely a fantasy. It does not have any basis in reality. It may be fun, it's had valuable contributions from residents and businesses there, but there's no way in hell that it's going to actually develop the way that these watercolors show, and that money, it would be fine if that wasn't a waste of money, but that money should be going to River Road, Santa Clara, in terms of their need for planning work, for real planning work, to South University, to Northeast neighbors. So contrast the two proposals, and I would hope that you will take a very critical look at this. I've talked to professionals both in the appraisal field and in the design field, and they concur, and really what needs to happen is this needs to be put on the shelf and the money redirected to more effective uses. Thanks.
Thanks, Paul. Nancy Ellen Locke?
My name is Nancy Ellen Locke, and I live at West 25th Avenue in Eugene, Oregon. I hope this microphone is working, and you can hear me. I have been with the concept plan since its inception. I started working on this plan in 1999, which seems like a long time, about 14 years. So it has slowly and continually brought together neighbors where there is a building of consensus, a building of neighborliness. The businesses have actually got organized, and we now have SOBA, which is the South Eugene Business District. Things are working much more smoothly with the neighborhood, with the business district, with the neighbors, and it's going very nicely. If this plan is not followed through with, we still have the neighborly list, I don't think putting an overlay zone as to what this can develop into over the next 50 years is a waste of time or money. We've invested a lot of effort, and Paul and I are still friends, even though we disagree. So that's all. Thank you.
Anybody else from the public? Okay, then we'll go on to Agenda Item 2, the Willamette update. Karen, you wanted to say a few words first?
Yes, I would like to. So just to kick off real briefly, we've been working on this process for close to two years. It has been evolving with the Envision Eugene recommendation, and also with the various input that we've had from the public. What we're intending to do here is to move it into the next phase. We have this draft concept plan that we'll introduce you to today. We have a meeting scheduled, another public open house, where you can hear from the public directly on April 4th, and then we're asking for your acceptance so that we can take it then to the city council to request that we be able to take the time to actually develop the implementation tools such as the code and the overlay zone that was mentioned. One thing I do want to clarify, you've just come off of your EWEB discussions where you were looking very closely at the detailed level of the form-based code. We're not here with this plan yet, we have not written code yet, and so I'm just going to ask you to kind of come up a little bit higher, and we are looking for your general comfort with the concepts and the principles that are in this plan. So with that, I'm going to send it over to Trish, who also is losing her voice, so I think she's going to give you a brief presentation, and then we'll give you lots of time to talk.
Yeah, members, commissioners, I'm going to let this go until 12:30, so kind of monitor your comments accordingly, okay?
Thank you. Well, I do apologize, my voice is not 100 percent, not even quite 50, but it's nice to be here at this milestone with this plan, and I hope you've all had a chance to review it prior to today. What I'll do is have a PowerPoint that will orient you essentially to the document, and in areas of a lot of text, we may just sort of skim over some of those. So the area, I think everyone knows where it is, from the park to the base of College Hill, Amazon Park, and from about 23rd to 32nd along Willamette, and how it fits into the big picture of Envision Eugene. It's one of our five corridors that have been identified, six actually, for accommodating both our housing and our commercial growth. And it's also a pilot of the area planning process. It's a strategy to create great places, to make them attractive for this kind of growth that's been envisioned with Envision Eugene, and we're trying to break new ground and create tools for other places that we hope to move through more quickly in the future. And certainly specific pillars are being implemented. In the back in the appendix, you'll find a very detailed list of how each pillar is implemented through this process. Just want to clarify, the concept plan is not the plan for Willamette Street, and it is so hard to separate those two, but it does provide a context for the Willamette Street plan. We've worked to close collaboration with Chris Henry's team, who's here today, just to kind of provide an illustration for that. That's the area that the street's looking at. When we talk about street character, we're looking at that area in front of buildings. This project's always been about enhancing what's great there, guiding future development, and supporting business success, and setting the stage for some improvements. This, I think you've had a chance to read about the purpose of the plan, but we want to come out with an actionable vision. Concerns have been addressed over the timeframe of this. People were concerned that they might have to move, the city might buy their property, those kinds of things. That's certainly not part of what the plan's about, and the city's not developing property. Existing uses can stay. So this is the district now, and slides unfortunately are pretty dark, but those are all familiar images of what we see out there now, as we know it, a lot of businesses, recreation. But this is where we were not all that long ago, 50 years ago, is the aerial on the left here. Here's 29th and Willamette, this was the drive-in movie theater here. This area was not very heavily developed yet, it was just starting to be developed. Here's some images, the Eugene Country Club 100 years ago occupied this area around 25th and Willamette, and we had single houses, big old farmhouses that are no longer there. So things do change constantly, and I think it's just a really helpful reminder for me to see that 50 years ago, it was remarkably different, and much less dense, and there's nothing to indicate that that level of change won't continue. And so this is to set that plan in for a really long timeframe, specifically 20 years, but we think it'll take a lot longer. I think there's a point in the document, you might be able to read it, that says the challenges and the opportunities are really kind of one and the same there. They're viable businesses, but they're vulnerable to the shifting change and any movement that happens with development in the district. Same with transportation. It works really well, but not always well for everyone. Buildings allow for more density and height, but the scale isn't particularly suitable. We can have really extremely tall buildings on Willamette, and yet, so we're doing, trying to look at modulating that, getting the right form, and the same with residential and parks. So the plan is a roadmap to action. This is an illustrative plan, it's drawn as if the whole area were built out just to get a feel for what's intended, what the outcome might be. It's certainly true that only a percentage of this, and maybe, you know, small percentage of it would get redeveloped in this way, but this is to give an idea of how components of the district relate to one another. These maps you've seen before, the vision map for connections and open space, hasn't changed since the fall, essentially just identifies the BRT route that might be there in the future on Amazon, access at 27th, the heart of the walkable district, a shopping alley, and various pedestrian and park connections. And the places for business and living has had few changes, a few small changes, but it just reinforces the existing patterns and comes up with some sort of nuanced kinds of zones to help transition between denser and less dense, and that's really one of the strengths of the plan. Because what we've been discovering with Envision Eugene and looking at more closely in this plan is that we have some missing housing types in our community, not enough in this circled area. If these sort of levels of intensity imply everything from mixed use down to single-family in scale, what we don't have much of are the single-family options, like the row houses, the cluster, the courtyard, alley houses, secondary dwellings. So this, in order to provide affordable housing and compatible transitions, that's been a big focus. So we've introduced these new concepts, single-family options, areas for row houses, and then apartments that have kind of a rowhouse character with a rhythm of doorways on the street. That's what they might look like. Again, wherever they happen to occur, they can be used and thought of in terms of transition. And in other, we had long conversations with the community, workshop by workshop, we built this plan with them, got feedback, got lots of online input, and these are all well-grounded in that process, as well as Envision Eugene process that led it. So this is just a specific situation where you have a larger apartment building and a single-family house. How do you use various features to create a transition? Or do you do a new building type, which is one of the new zones, like row houses between there, to provide a little more subtle transition? Here's some illustrations, this is an area that has just a few more dwelling types in within single-family. Here is really a situation we see out there now, but we could have more of, with a taller building on Willamette Street, then an apartment building, then a row house, and then a single-family house. In order to influence that, you know, you just start to introduce the row houses or the courtyard houses. There's an image, maybe over a very long term, Willamette Street might have two-story, three-story, up to five-story buildings, and these were studies we did with the community about what's the character of the street sign. This is a shopping alley concept, it's only one block along, it's just an important kind of connector between the Willamette Street and the Oak Street section, gets people into kind of an intimate little place where they can have coffee and lunch and do a little shopping. We had a big conversation with the community about what are the elements on buildings, and what are things that would need to go into our consideration when we develop the implementation tools. Similarly for parks and plazas and green space, just what is it about them that's important? And in the plan, you'll read the design principles that go along with each of these categories. Parking strategy is a big idea for one of the first steps of transition is a shared parking area, so people can actually park and get out of their car and not drive in and out on Willamette Street, adding to congestion. And there are nine other parking strategies listed here. So what was the approach to get here? I alluded to, well, first of all, it was an integrated approach, really robust community participation, planning with urban design, looking at outcomes. I think that was what we're doing more and more, and it's certainly central to this. And then planning with the knowledge that a community investment program is going to be essential. And across the bottom, you'll see this in the plan, there are just some milestones here of events that were held and products that came out of it and were used to get feedback online. Sorry. There's a list of all, some of the many ways that public engagement occurred, four major public workshops and online presentations, and 450 survey responses. This was the support, the level of support back in the end of the year about how the plan met the needs of the community as a whole. Two-thirds of the people felt absolutely to mostly. And here's more specific data from our surveys. Very high numbers here, there are two that are a little lower, and that reflects the lack of conclusions about Willamette Street itself, but all of these are a minimum of two-thirds, and up to 85, 86 percent is support for the concepts, and that's with 450 results. So intended outcomes are in the plan, and those outcomes are funneled into the implementation tools that will be developed sort of as a next step after this. And here's where we are now, the concept plan for your discussion. These are the elements that would get developed later, some pieces of it we would need for adoption of Envision Eugene. And then we have some questions for you. So thank you for bearing with me and my voice. So we'd like to start with, unless you have questions about anything set up to now.
Questions from the commission, generally? Now Patricia, you want us to focus on the vision and the design elements and implementation?
Well, I'd like to maybe just move that all together into just what is your level of comfort with the concept plan, and then what suggestions you have for preparing the commission for acceptance of the concept plan.
And is the April 4th open house our session or planning department's session?
Well, that'll be the third topic we can talk about and describe an image for it. Could do that now or when we get to it?
Why don't you give us just a little briefing of what the idea is in case that generates some questions?
Sure, certainly. Well, we've had a few thoughts on it, but I think generally, we've been talking about sort of an open house format with some stations with different components of the information from the plan, and a planning commissioner and a staff person, both available at each of those stations. Can you finish what we just talked about?
Sure.
I've just not reached the end.
Basically, as Trish was talking about just now, the format of the event isn't set up yet, so we're leaving that a little bit open, but generally, the idea would be to provide information to the community about what the content of the plan is, and create a forum for discussion. If people have specific questions, what does this mean, you know, what's going to happen next? If they want to get into some of the detail of the content of the plan and have a conversation about that. We want to provide a forum to do that. So the idea would be generally an open house.
And if I could just add, you know, we're not asking for, we're not in the formal adoption process yet, so a full public hearing wasn't necessary at this point, but we just want to create some kind of opportunity for you to hear directly from folks.
Okay, all right. Okay, we'd like to begin the discussion. Steve, I saw your hand. Okay, Steve.
First of all, I'd like to commend the planning department and all the people that participated. Yeah, I wanted to commend the planning department and all the people that participated. I know it's a long, involved process. However, there are some areas that I have some very significant concerns with the plan. I'm going to point it out by page numbers in the thing here, too. To me, the key element of this plan is the corridor itself. In other words, if we don't do, you know, we're depending on meeting our Envision Eugene goals by definitely getting some multi-use buildings built on corridors with housing and mixed use. And to me, solutions that rely more on what I would consider upzoning nearby residential is not really solving our problem for us. We still have to focus on what do we need to do to get on the, so on page 11, it says a time horizon of 30 or 40 years for the multi-use, mixed-use multifamily. I'll go back later on where we talk about implementation and we do the mixed use after we do the single-family, which I think is a completely reverse order. You really want to do the, I mean, we need this for the other quarters, and we need to basically figure out how to make it work. And if that means that you have to spend more time on it initially, because that's the part that is really, we're really dependent on. So I'm going to flip through a couple of other pages here to mention my concerns. My concerns are-
Your point is to focus on the multifamily ahead of the single family?
Right. And if I turn to page 20, under the first subheading, Key Challenges, and like the fifth bulleted item, where it says, "Some current affordable housing in the district could be displaced by more expensive housing," that's really not being accurate. It should just say currently affordable housing would be, because that's what will happen. Any housing we build in there, you know, because right now, we have some reasonably affordable housing to the east of Willamette Street. Obviously, as you go up the hill, it changes dramatically, but to the east of Willamette Street, we have relatively small, mostly one-story, sometimes a few one and a half, maybe an occasional two. Those are smaller, lower-cost housing, and anything we do in there is going to be more expensive. So my concerns are related to what happens in that area east of the housing. Because what I, I look at the proposals for LTO as sort of essentially, if we're going to upzone it, let's just upzone it. You know, in other words, we call it single-family, but, you know, we're saying, we're essentially allowing construction that you would normally find in an R3 zone. You know, three-story buildings is what we find in, you know, Western University and South University in R3 zones, and they meet 40 units per acre, you know, the R3 zone. So if, you know, rather than show it on the map as three stories, which is essentially what you're doing, you know, if we really want to increase the zoning there, then we should be honest and just do it and figure out where to do it. Now, again, you know, again, my concern is that we do have, you know, a pillar in our Envision Eugene about enhancing and improving existing neighborhoods, and in particular, the justification in the plan for that is, I'd have to say pathetic, because we really aren't doing anything, I mean, if we're doing something to improve that existing neighborhood, then we would probably try to enhance the character, you know, if we are going to, if that's what we're trying to do there, then we would do stuff to maintain compatibility with a bunch of small, single-family houses. We would maybe try to finish the sidewalk grid, you know, add low-level lights mid-block or, you know, plant street trees. But to say that, you know, adding in, you know, is that you would find typically in an R3 zone, three-story building, I mean, row houses generally aren't one-story, they're usually two or three-story, and they look, you know, when you assemble a bunch of them, they look, you know. So again, I'm not, I'm not saying that if that's what you want to do, let's just do it, and, you know, figure out what you want to do in terms of rezoning and do it. I have a couple of other smaller issues. I think you really have to decide what the connectors are to-
What page, John?
26. To the Parkway? Because obviously, we don't want to encourage people to cross a busy street where there aren't crosswalks. And so we know that they will probably crosswalk at like 27th when there's one, and there isn't now, but based upon your design and improving that. But to enhance the other streets going to the Parkway might encourage a situation where we're going to have more conflicts with pedestrians and theoretically a busy street.
So what does that, are you referring to?
20, yeah, the-
27th?
Well, it's like 26 and 27, there's a couple of other drawings that show it. The main one makes sense, where you basically already have, you know, sort of street access now, but there's some other drawings that actually show it on a number of these other streets, so 27th, and maybe even 28th, the one along the Garden Way. You may have to do judiciously, because obviously, you don't want a situation where you're going to encourage people to go across, you know, a busy street. Let me see if there's any other notes that I had here I wanted to make point of capturing. So one of the things I'm particularly concerned about is implementation plans, page 54, where you develop the code changes for the single-family options first. Again, from my point of view, if you don't get the medium, the multifamily, mixed use on the corridor, we've failed. So you tackle the hard problem first, and then you come back, and after you've dealt with that completely, then you come back and deal with, you know, how you deal with, because that has some other ancillary problems, which is related to transitions, and that's one of the other areas that I have a little bit of concern. When you go through transitions, it seems to me that you're better off using a street as a divider rather than a property line, because, let's take 57, doesn't really matter, any of the zoning pages or whatever. If you look at, if you try to do the transitions, you want to try to do the transitions so that you have a larger separation between one building type and another, and actually, actually probably, page 61 is a better example, because it's the proposed zoning. It seems to me that you really want to, when you get on the west side of Willamette, then you, in terms of transitions, you want to look and see where the big transition occurs, and it seems to me that you would have the definition, the zone change sort of happen on the street rather than on a property line. So now we're all of a sudden allowing our, you know, three-story buildings on the, between Portland and the, west of Portland for the half a block, and then it's butting right up against R1. So now we have essentially R3 butting against R1 on a property line. And so I have, you know, I think there's, the hard parts here are getting the, you know, figuring out what you're going to do on the corridor in terms of the zone, the code language and whatever, and then figuring out how you do the transitions between essentially R3 and- essentially R3 and R4 and R1. How we do that best? Because that's what we're going to have in all these other areas when we look at corridors. We're going to basically be going through R1 areas with a corridor. We need to figure out how to get that. We're trying to get the housing on the corridor, not two blocks away.
Before I go to Bill, I'm going to give the staff the chance to respond, the number of issues. If, if this is our initial transit-oriented mixed-use corridor, Steve's got some questions about why the perceived emphasis first on single-family units rather than on the multifamily, and then also how to deal with the transition zones. I think I understand his perspective coming from the university area where we've dealt with that, upzoning adjacent to existing single-family, lower-density conflicts. So, at least those two things shed some light on.
I'll, I'll start, if that's all right, and then Trish and Robin can add on and, or correct me if necessary. It's, it's a good question about kind of what do you do first as far as implementation? And Commissioner Baker has a good point that it is kind of the bigger-density projects that, that are in need to implement in Envision Eugene. Here's, here's the kind of thinking that we've had, and it revolves around timing. As you know, we are looking at, trying to move forward with adoption towards the end of this year, early next year sometime. In order to see some of that mixed-use development and the zone change and the form-based code and the overlay zone that would accompany it, we think that will take a significant amount of staff resource that we don't have, we don't believe we have the capacity for at the same time we're trying to push through the entire Envision Eugene package. So, it's a matter of, and, and let me be clear, we could potentially go in and do the rezoning, but without having those associated protections, I guess I'll call them protections in place, such as, well, what are the transitions? What does that building form look like? That's where it comes in where we want to have the form-based code so people have some certainty of knowing what that will look like instead of just kind of a crude rezoning of the area. So, it's kind of a resource and timing thing. That said, I, I agree that that is where we need to put our emphasis, and our intention would be to move forward with that as soon as the Envision Eugene package gets approved. And in the meantime, the single-family option zone felt more manageable and something that could be applied in different parts of the town kind of as a, as a pilot tool. But we're, you know, these are all things we're still open to. The other thing I do want to hit on before I kick it over to these guys is the reason we didn't consider, we didn't say, "Let's upzone this to R2 or R3," is because we're actually, we believe in keeping the same density levels that exist in R1. So, we would not be proposing higher densities. We would be keeping that, that same density range that you see in R1, but trying to encourage some other forms of single-family housing that might get us towards the higher end of that range instead of the lower end of that range. So, it wasn't, it's not a conscious decision or, you know, to go ahead and, and allow more density there. It's really about the form of the building. Is that correct? Anything you guys would add to that?
I think those are the primary points. The, when we talk about the community investment program later, that will, I think, maybe clarify some possible movement on the, on the corridors that Commissioner Baker's talking about, moving that up a little faster. I think you got it.
What you said is the implication that the transition, where it's not separated by a street, as Steve was suggesting, but where it's properly aligned, that that transition between the higher-low-density residential and the existing residential will be addressed through, again, the setbacks and the stepbacks or the transition things a biggie?
Yeah.
There are multiple tools that are in the plan that you've seen that, that do that, not only building forms and features and distance and landscaping and lighting, some of the things that were mentioned, but also introducing these other building types to transition between bigger and smaller. I think you've raised an interesting point, you know, he's, and I don't know how serious it is, that if one upzones it, then one should just upzone it. There are a few small areas here that do, are going to have essentially a higher intensity than they currently do. That's part of reinforcing existing patterns, just sort of lifting everything a little bit. Say we're commercial met, single-family, introducing sort of a rowhouse character apartment between those two. But in Envision Eugene, under the compatibility, it does talk about using area planning to make these kind of decisions, to have this community process where some real change does occur, only in places that are area-planned, not all over the city. You know, these nuanced transitions would get a different kind of scrutiny at the same time as increasing intensity. And so, that is the balance that we've worked with the community very closely to try to find and feel like we've, you know, moving toward that solid middle between those who are wanting high-rises on the Parkway and those who want no change and single-story houses only. Somewhere in the middle there. So, just remind ourselves about that.
Steve, it's really those, but if you have just a quick-
Yeah. Just two things. One is, from my point of view, it didn't seem to me that we needed to complete the Willamette area plan for Envision Eugene. Again, this is a prototype for how we handle corridors. And I don't think, it's, it's not, it's not imperative that it be in place, completed by the time we adopt Envision Eugene. And so, if we get started on dealing with the corridor and multifamily now, and it means we speed things up six months, you know, down the line. The other thing is, one of the reasons that I was concerned about the, the changes proposed in the single-family zone is we have another pillar called, you know, Sustainability Pillar. And we have solar access codes. And so, now all of a sudden, you're trying to throw, you know, three-story buildings in when you have one-story buildings, you know, are we going to basically remove? I mean, again, we're trying to make sure that we maintain in certain areas that single families, the only zone now where we're pretty much where we still have the solar access code. Are we going to be removing that requirement or are we going to be making sure that it's being enforced? In which case, it may not be possible to do some of these things because of the impact. You know, these are east-west lots and you put, you know, put a three-story building on one lot and, you know, you basically doesn't meet the solar, you know, you got, can go 20 feet from the property, you know, we know this from the project that we had over in, anyway, I just wanted to bring that up. And that's it for me.
Well, and I, I guess, again, thank you for all the work that's gone into this and
the effort that you've put into it. I was going to tag on to, I think, what Randy just addressed as far as the transitions and what Steve was concerned about, and I would think that it seems like with the form-based code, we could transition that down even more than just strictly three-story, but to be aware of that as we, as we are butting an R1 or a small, single-family. My, my comments are really almost more questions, and some of them are going to overlap when we get into Robin's portion of it, but I, but I want to get them out on the table. My first question is the single-family options idea. Would that also include kind of the concept of pocket neighborhoods and that sort of thing, or is that really a little too big from?
Can you clarify what you mean by pocket neighborhoods?
Pocket neighborhoods are where you have, you maybe have a central sort of parking area for people, and then they walk to smaller houses that are, it's almost like a cluster subdivision. But then they're often around a, a central courtyard or that sort of thing. And it sounded like some of the concepts that you had going here might also apply if somebody wanted to do a pocket neighborhood concept. But I just know they're, they're becoming more and more popular, I think, especially in retirement age groups.
I think within the cluster houses and the courtyard houses that are part of the group of housing types, one might propose a pocket neighborhood, whether this is-
Yeah, I wasn't sure.
-area that would happen in or whether when it's applied somewhere else in the city, just given the development character there now. But I don't think we necessarily rule those out.
Okay. And then my second question is going to, where it's going to overlap a little bit is just how to accomplish the shared parking strategies if we have some plans and ideas on, on where that might go. And if you want to save that for, for Robin's part, I know that's, that was kind of my question there, too. And then the, the design assistance, you were talking about the ability to have design assistance, and I wasn't sure if you thought yet what that might look like, how that might happen or that. Those, I think, are really, you know, that really covers my questions on this part of it.
I'll say one word about parking and perhaps Robin can talk about the design assistance. The parking, we've just started to explore it a little bit with our parking manager and our development, community development team, what options are out there. But certainly, the first step would be kind of a test of a shared parking area in some way that the city could partner with a property owner and making a shared parking lot available and signage and just trying to see how it works, really, is kind of a first step. Over time, that may become more formalized. The district could have its own parking lots. The city may have a role in partnering as well. And really, long-term, perhaps a parking garage, like downtown was a business person's plan, business group's plan.
And I see that being, and I know we're not talking about the South Willamette Street plan, but, but I know with the number of driveways that we have now, that's kind of one of the big issues with all of that. And so, I think those are going to have to overlap and interlace, you know, as we move forward on that. So, that was just my, my thought on that.
I definitely will. Just a comment about the design assistance. Again, this is part of implementation, and what design assistance looks like is sort of up for discussion and experimentation, I think really is maybe a good word for it. In general, the intent would be that, for example, if we have a set of guidelines or standards that we're hoping to achieve for the neighborhood in terms of compatibility or the look and feel of different housing types, and how does that work? Is it development on a particular site? Or what do we mean, what does, what does compatibility mean? Help translating some of the guidelines that are embedded in this into an actual project? I think we could be very helpful in facilitating that. Our staff could be helpful in facilitating that. That could be one way to look at design assistance. Another way would be possibly in combination with some kind of an investment program serving as a liaison between the community and a developer to help generate ideas for how things might work. Another option would be something that was actually done in Portland, which is actually pre-designing different housing types for lots that actually are the configuration that you would find in a particular neighborhood. And working ahead of time with community members and developers to say, "Okay, here's a, sort of a template for a design that works." You know, you can fit the housing in there. It's cute, it looks good, you know, the parking works, the neighbors like it, the developer, it's profitable, you know, it can actually happen here." And setting up a few, like a handful of templates that the development community or property owners can draw from and use in future projects. So, that's another option for us.
I've got myself, and then Rick. I've got three questions. Trish, in the presentation, you showed the public response summary, and those are reasonably impressive, high percentages that tend to favor the concept. Did you say that's out of 450 respondents?
Mm-hmm. Well, we had 459 respondents over the course of several surveys. This is out of, the final survey was usually is accumulation of those, and I don't remember the number exactly. I think it was, it was under 100, but it was a high number, approaching 100.
Was that on the internet or was that from a meeting?
Combined.
Combined, okay. The second question is on page 15 of the draft proposal, there is a box that says of the, of the 161 acres, the metro plan has certain designation distribution. And maybe I missed it, but is there a comparable chart that shows how that would change?
There's not, but that would be very interesting. We could put that together.
Well, I think it would be significant if, if we're talking about implementing Envision Eugene. If we're talking about increasing, I, I hear, I hear what you're saying, trying to in the lower-density residential strive for the upper end of what's allowed in that. But I think also maybe some discussion about the medium and high-density residential, if that's changing, so we can see just what the outcome of the plan is. And then the third question always pulls me back to still where I am with this concept plan. Help me understand how this is similar or different from how the, how the eventual package is going to be similar or, or different from what we did with Walnut Station? And I don't mean in terms of details, but in terms, there'll be a special area overlay in form-based code. Isn't that essentially where we got to in Walnut Station? So, is this just the same process with maybe a little bit different name to it to get there? Because there was a lot of public involvement with the university neighborhoods, you know, to get to that.
Yeah, absolutely. And again, there's, this is implemented in different ways, of course, but a special area plan with an associated form-based code is, is right, I think it's right there in the implementation plan as a core feature of where this is headed. The reason we're talking about a concept plan right now is, it's basically a middle step between the public engagement effort and having something that gets adopted and codified and all the detail and effort that goes along with that. And the reason that we have this middle step is to say, "Okay, folks, are we headed in the right direction? Is this, are these, the ideas that we want to try to manifest in the community?" And being really clear about how we would go forward and do that. And by doing this, we have a greater certainty moving forward with the implementation steps that we're headed in the right direction. And also, I think, a greater certainty in the community that they know what's going on when we're headed towards implementation, they know what we're implementing towards. And it also, I think, has a little bit of extra utility in, in a, in the context of our work plan right now because we have a tremendous amount to get done for the Envision Eugene adoption coming up. And this allows us to kind of plant a flag with this project, work on some pieces of it, but also have a really clear understanding that the rest of it's going to happen, too, and how it's going to happen. So, it kind of wraps it up. But, but in a nutshell, yes, it is very, it's very similar to what the Walnut Station plan has resulted in.
Which leads me to a part B on the third question here. On page 10, it makes a real strong point here, what the plan doesn't do, and it talks about it, does not require anybody to move or sell or develop. It doesn't guarantee that any property will ever be developed. But once we get to the point where an overlay, a special area zone is adopted for this, then the expectation will be that if somebody wants to redevelop, they will redevelop with row houses or higher-density, low resident, low-density residential, higher-density, low-residential density development or so forth, right?
Well, not necessarily. I mean, a property owner can choose to redevelop however it suits them economically within the, within the framework of the concept plan. Say, for example, there was a, a part of the plan that's a single-family options. I think there's a, a couple of chunks of single-family options that are proposed here. That doesn't, that doesn't mean that, say, for example, a rowhouse zone that's allowed for, rowhouses are allowed. That doesn't mean that if someone wants to rebuild their house, they have to do a rowhouse, certainly not. All the options that are open within currently an R1 zone would still be on the table. It doesn't force anybody to do anything.
Well, okay.
All, all it does is open the possibilities for them.
Well, that's essentially what Walnut Station is, too, right?
Yes. Yes. I don't actually believe that there's any minimum level of density in Walnut Station either, so. The idea is that if you, if you require a certain kind of form to be built, well, let's take, for example, if it's a commercial redevelopment. for example, if it's a commercial redevelopment. The location of that building and how it addresses the street, and there are certain details that would be prescribed, but whether that's a one, or a two, or a three-story building, or how intense that is, has to be left up to the market.
Yeah. I know when we're talking about E-Web, when the subject of Walnut Station came up, there was some criticism that we don't know how Walnut Station's really going to work. And that's a given. But it is kind of our prototype standard out there. What I would be interested in, as we move through this process, or any other corridor planning process, if we just kind of come back to Walnut Station and see how things are paralleling that, or if they're deviating, why they're deviating. I know that there's always a danger through a cookie cutter, but, you know, cookie cutter approach, but it seems to me that Walnut Station was so well-developed, with so much community involvement and consulting input and so forth, that it's kind of the standard bearer. And I just would be interested, as we go through these processes, how things compare to that. Rick?
Yeah, I'd like to actually go back, Carolyn, to a comment you made. I want to make sure I'm clear on it. You talked about trying to get some of this work done by the end of the year, so it could be part of the Envision Eugene sort of approval process, I think. Envision Eugene. And I'm, I was under the impression that part of this plan was also to deal with the higher density, to really get it sort of fine-tuned, so that we would have kind of that project, or this model, to use in other corridors, so that we could actually have a measurement of how many units we believe we could get in our corridor areas, because that is a requirement, at least I believe, of our Envision Eugene process, because of the untold number of hundreds and hundreds of units. We haven't really said, we kind of know how they're going to fit. But I think I heard you say, no, we're going to do it after. And I have a little concern of, how do we submit, maybe this is a little bit off the plan, I've got some other questions about that, but how can we deal with that untold density and how it's going to work on our corridors if this plan isn't going to sort of show that, too, as this part of a work product?
It's a nuanced answer, I think I'll give. We have been talking with the state about kind of what they are going to require of us, and it's a bit of a gray line right now.
It's scary.
And I agree. We do believe, though, that we can, from a technical standpoint, we can show that we have capacity to meet a lot of our need. If we look at what we're expecting in Walnut, what we can expect downtown, the E-Web property, and we do have some estimates about what we think we can expect in South Willamette. And so I think that we have those numbers. We don't necessarily need to make the designation changes in South Willamette to make that happen. And you guys correct me if I'm wrong here. What we do want to do is make it more likely that that redevelopment will happen. And a lot of that will come in, actually, in the second part of this discussion around investment strategies. And so one thing that we would like to put in place is a pilot for how we might apply investment strategies in this area that will result in more density along our corridors. And so that's what we will be talking about in the second part of this discussion. But we don't believe that that necessarily requires the form-based code to be in place. We could attach some design criteria to whatever potential incentives might be applied here, which might be a quicker way to see some of that density, and still kind of meet the vision that we have for this area. So that's kind of our thinking right now. It is in the gray area.
So hopefully, DLCD doesn't come back and say, we don't like your gray area, make it black or white.
We're working pretty closely with them on this, and I feel comfortable right now.
One of the things that I always would like to see, and don't seem to get there, is I would like to see, when we talk about implementation, that we talk more about, how do we get these developments off the ground? We tend to use the term implementation as, we're all done with our code, everything's really hunky-dory, now we're going to set the plan over here, and we wait. And we have a lot of plans around that we're still waiting. Some of them go back a decade or more, and a shovel hasn't been turned yet. And I was a little bit concerned when I read the 30 to 40 years, because it doesn't fit within the 20-year timeframe we're legislated to deal with. So it'd be nice to have sort of the practical side of, how do we get some of this done? I noticed in here, like, we're talking about maybe changing street right-ofways and things. How does that occur from the person who wants to build the first four row houses, or the person who wants to build the first multi-story building? The other thing that I read in here, and I think it was implied, is that there's going to be some requirement for public infrastructure changes. And I think it would be very helpful for a community, as they read these plans, even if it's in today's dollars, to say, what do we believe that number really is? I mean, this morning in the paper, there was an article about some developments that have not worked in other areas, and this is after somebody put millions and millions into it. I think it'd be really nice to know that, because if we're saying that the city's going to have to ultimately step up, it'd be nice to understand where that bar is. And then also, then the city has to say, as part of their consideration for these plans, are we willing to step up to those types of monies? I mean, it's, you know, if it's a $10 million deal over 20 years, maybe the city is. But if it's $250 million over that 20-year period, the city says, no way, then the plan sits and collects dust, and we don't get it done. So I think it'd be really helpful, particularly if you want me to buy off on these things, is to really get some general gauge of what that is. And I think that's tended to be our shortfall, in my feelings, for a lot of these plans, is we talk about it, but we don't understand, what is the city going to ultimately be responsible, or could be responsible, in dollars and cents? Now, maybe we figure out incentive plans or other things to sort of share that, but it would be nice to sort of know what that package is going to cost, to say, okay, then how do we now get it? I mean, I was surprised this morning when you wrote an article, that there's going to have to be an extensive amount of repairing work done, and nobody even understands what that cost is, you know? And if that's got to be an early step, where does that money come from? And if we got early steps here that are going to require a pretty good infusion of funds, how do we get that kind of money? And that's what I'd like to see in these plans, because then I think we got an idea if they're going to move forward or not.
Would it make sense to add something into the implementation plan that suggests quantifying?
I've got an idea.
Basic estimates of.
So let's wait till you're.
Public improvements?
Well, I think it'd be great to understand what those numbers is, because, again, I'm just going to use numbers, but let's say that at Walnut Station, it came up that we needed a half a billion dollars to make that plan really get off the ground. Well, we look at that and say, we don't have half a billion dollars, we're not going to do that. But if what we needed was $5 million to get the plan kick-started, then all of a sudden, somebody's got an idea of what those monies are, to sort of get this thing moving forward.
Right. So just suggesting that, not necessarily that work has to be done as part of this plan, but that doing that estimation work and maybe understanding that could be an implementation action.
Yes. And again, implementation is, you know, I know the question was asked on E-Web, how does the first person come in and build the first building? And that was sort of like, we don't know. And well, if we don't know, how do we get there? And that's what I mean here. To me, implementation is more than just the code part, it's also, how do we see this getting off the ground? What do we expect to happen in a five- or 10-year period? You know, do we expect some streets to be changed? Can we get some buildings, and where might those spots be that we could actually see some of this occur? Instead of sort of like, here it is, we've got a nice plan, we've put it over here, and now we're going to head out to Santa Clara River Road, and we're going to start another plan out there. And we got another plan set on our shelf that we're not getting anything done with.
Steve, I'm going to let John have his turn, and then we're going to move on in seconds, okay?
Trying not to be redundant, and I am supportive in the concepts that Commissioner Baker and Duncan have brought up. How can I say this, Ben, without doing that?
Just say it.
I was really looking forward to the South Willamette Concept Plan. I think it's a great job, public involvement, all of that. And I was looking forward to it, because it was a way that I thought was a pilot for whatever area planning was, that might be the new way of area planning, or special area, whatever they're called. But it was going to replace that, because I felt that's a critical thing that our neighborhoods need, and having a model for that is fantastic. And second, with Envision Eugene, to me, if we're going to accommodate this potential growth in 20 years, the issue that I see here, which bothers me all the time, is what do you do first? It's like a management decision. And by what you do first, I mean, is if we're going to accommodate this growth, where is it more likely going to occur? And so when I read page 11, and I say, well, this might not happen in multifamily for 30 to 40 years, does that sort of tell me, then, that the whole idea of trying to do redevelopment, rather than development, redevelopment is going to take a really long time, as Mr. Duncan indicated here, potentially very expensive? Is that what the city should be focusing on, if it's to accommodate what Envision Eugene sees in 20 years first? Not that it shouldn't be doing it, but it may not be the first priority. I happen to live in an area that, let's say, if development occurred, because it's not redevelopment, it's development, and all of this happens, I would not like to see 20 years from now, you're out there doing a plan on how to redevelop the area and do it right. This is looking at something to how to do it right. And I'm saying there's a lot of areas out there that are going to be developed if this growth does come and population, and how do we do it right the first time, so that we're not back doing this with the community later? And so that's what my concern is here, and that's why I'm interested in the next discussion on incentives. But it's also, I'll stress that point again, is what does the city do first to really achieve Envision Eugene, based on its limited resources, and the best way to do that, without letting the others fall by the wayside, but knowing that this is where it's going to happen? That's where I'm coming from.
So let me, if I can, try to, I'm not 100% sure I understand.
Solve the revenue problem for us, Carolyn.
That would be wonderful. But let me just say, I don't think, when we say this is 30 to 40 years out, that's in recognition that time, you know, you saw the pictures from 50 years ago, this place will continue to evolve. It probably won't meet the full vision within 20 years. But that doesn't mean that part of it won't be implemented along the way. And we want to have that vision, so we can begin that implementation now, in the way that we want it. So is this going to solve all of Envision Eugene's capacity issues? No, it's a piece of the puzzle.
Yeah.
Just like E-Web is, just like downtown, just like Walnut Station. And we do think, compared to other parts of the community, this is closer to the tipping point, in terms of being kind of, what's your, a smaller gap to fill, to actually make it pencil, than other areas of town.
Well, let me, okay, other areas of town, I'm talking other areas of Eugene. And I get confused with the concept of what town is and what the city of Eugene is.
Oh, I've used those.
And I'd also like to come back and talk to the concept of the tipping point when we get into that.
Sure.
But let me just respond that, if one were to say, in 10 years from now, half of what we project is going to come, then one looks at what that demand is, and one looks and says, well, maybe in South Willamette, we're going to achieve 20% of what we think here in those 10 years. Well, what is that? If that's only 100 units or 50 jobs, I'm not saying it shouldn't happen, but I'm saying
What is it?
it could have been 10 times that more on land that is to be developed, rather than the cost of doing something that's a redevelopment. That's where I'm coming from. Okay? I just put it that way.
I think one.
Let's wrap up.
Okay. Perhaps one clarification is that the imagery shown in this plan, in the district sections, in the illustrative plan, all, they provide far more than we need within Envision Eugene. That's why it's called a 30- to 40-year timeframe, and to put some realism on that. But to accomplish what we need with Envision Eugene, and develop small parts of that district to that standard, is totally possible, based on, in terms of the multiple-family housing. So I hope that gives a little balance there.
Let's slip into agenda item three, the community investment strategies.
Thank you.
About five minutes running so far.
Thanks, Freddie.
Yeah. Yeah, I heard you there.
Why don't I take this off, quick? I want to welcome Denny Bro to the table, from Community Development, who's an important partner with us, obviously, on the investment discussion. And our conversation already kind of alludes to this, but also the newspaper articles over the weekend about E-Web. We know that the vision and the regulatory tools only get us so far. The market has to take it the rest of the way. And so really, we're just having a high-level discussion about what it takes, and what the city's role is in helping make those public investments. Our experience with downtown tells us a lot about, A, how long it takes, the type of tools, the combination of tools, and just the stubbornness. And so we'll, I'll turn it over to Robin to talk about where we are now with this work.
Great. Thanks, Carolyn.
That's what we already got.
So here's more of what we got. There's a team working on this.
Different from what you.
That's the same thing. Yeah, what's coming around there is just a copy of the presentation, which I sent out to planning commissioners in note form with all the, so rather than doing a presentation here, I thought we could save some time. So this is actually an experiment.
Based on input from you.
Yes, based on input from you, invested a little time upfront to kind of save what we're going to say, yeah, lead that ahead of time, and then just right into the discussion. So unless somebody has clarifying questions about the content of the presentation, I think we can actually kind of get right to the heart of the matter here. Essentially, and the other item that's being passed around here, let me find my place here. The other item that's being passed around is a matrix indicating some potential investment areas in a toolbox, community investment toolbox. And actually, you know what? I am going to back up just a little bit, and just kind of frame the conversation briefly. So I think every time we talk about community investments, I'd like to just clarify that there's a few areas here that the Envision Eugene talks about investing in the community. One of those is compact urban development, and that's going to be the focus of the conversation here. Another one is single-family housing options, which we'll talk about at some other point, but it is relevant to adoption of Envision Eugene. And also affordable housing, and there's a very robust existing affordable housing program. And economic prosperity. So there's a whole set of investments that have to do with floating all boats through increasing good-paying jobs in the community, growing existing businesses, and that sort of thing. So just to clarify, we are really talking today about the compact urban development piece. And within that piece, this is based on a matrix that we talked about at the last planning commission meeting, I think on the 28th of January. These are the three potential program areas that fall under the general heading of compact urban development. And so one of these is a compact urban development district, and this would be basically some kind of a defined area where we try to stimulate the redevelopment of higher-density, either commercial or multifamily uses, to generate more jobs and housing on existing lands. Another one would be a pioneer project redevelopment partnerships. We're basically calling it that right now. But essentially, this is a place where you make real targeted investments and close partnerships with projects that have the potential to really be game changers in a part of town. And I think a lot of the work that Denny has been doing downtown, along with essentially funding and revenue generated by the Urban Renewal District, is a great example of that kind of work. And then finally, we have an opportunity sitting program, which we've been, we don't have one yet, but we have the opportunity to create one, and we've been talking about it for quite some time. And this is a way that we could potentially. And this is a way that we could potentially have some more dispersed benefits around the community that meet certain criteria. So for example, the conversation that we had with our subcommittee members on Friday, I think the 8th it was, the idea came up of, well, how do we create opportunities in other places that are not just the core downtown? So that may be an option for that. This may be a more equitable distribution of benefits. So thinking about that as some general framework, we have three basic questions here, and these also relate to some of what we learned during the discussion with the subcommittee, which is, let's pull the lens out just a little bit on the whole idea of investment programs and look at the array of options. And that array has to do with these three questions, which is, what type of development do we want to be investing in? So let's try to define that if we can. And today, again, we're just talking at a general level. Where do we want to invest specifically, geographically? And which tools do we want to use? So eventually, what we're going to have to do is kind of drill down here, and for those each—for those different programmatic areas, assuming those are ones we want to move forward with, kind of say, this program area attempts to stimulate this sort of a project with these sort of results in this kind of an area using these tools. And so we're just starting the process today of sorting through what some of the options are and getting some feedback from you all about what direction you see this taking. Does that sound fair? Make sense? So perhaps we should start with the what question, is in what type of development do we want to invest in? And generally, we're looking at commercial and multifamily, so yes.
I'm going to take the liberty and go first this time. So I've been itching to do that. First, some questions for you, Robyn. On page four, the chart that, the Investing in New Urban Form Chart, they had all the check marks.
Yes.
I'm curious why, under opportunity-sighting, there isn't a check mark in the affordable housing law?
Uh, there should be.
Okay. So that answers that question. Then on page seven, there's this discussion about areas closest to the tipping point include Downtown, Midtown, Franklin Boulevard, which I assume is Walnut Station.
Yes.
South Alamot, and the South Coburg area.
Yes.
My question is, was E-Web considered?
It's part of Downtown.
That's part of Downtown.
E-Web's in the Downtown Plan boundary, yes.
Okay. And other than West 11th, what corridor is not on here as a tipping point?
Uh, well, the 6th, 7th corridor, I think, is actually on there, but the—this one's actually not nearly as close to the tipping point as the other ones.
Okay.
So River Road, Highway 99.
Okay, yeah.
6th, 7th, West 11th.
This slide on page eight is a visual.
Okay. Well, okay, so here's my thought on this. When we've put some work into the opportunity-sighting, we came up with criteria as to what would make a good opportunity site to go at—to—not go after, but to expend resources and time and energy. And the more blocks that we could check off, proximity to shopping, proximity to transit lines, proximity to open space, these kinds of criteria is what made an opportunity site an opportunity site. My suggestion is, is that that's what—we create something that parallels that so that we can kind of have a check off, that Franklin gets nine out of 10, Trainsong gets two out of 10, and so forth, to kind of give you that, what's closest to a tipping point. And then, to me, what it comes really back to, what I've heard Rick, I think, saying, and what John Zorsky has said, this investment stuff needs to be in a capital improvement program, which we have not seen here at the commission level for a long, long time. That will identify, for example, for E-Web, how much money there might be, a willingness of the public to allocate, and in what kind of timeframe. And that just then gives an idea then, John, then you can say, "Well, okay, the draft CIP is prioritizing Area A. Maybe it makes sense to prioritize more money in a shorter timeframe to Area B." I think we need to get into the capital improvement program review once again to identify where all this comes up.
And I have spoken to folks in both Public Works and Finance about looping Planning Commission into that cycle next time it comes around, and we're all in agreement that that's a good idea.
And that cycle is next up?
Uh, it will begin in 2014, so it's every two years.
And one was just adopted.
Uh, I know it went to council. I don't know what the action taken was.
Just for our own edification, it might be worthwhile just to see what that latest CIP tells us we're going to do.
Sure. And we can—we could have somebody come and talk about what it currently is and involvement in the future.
If you guys think that would be a good idea. Okay.
And just to clarify, we're talking—the capital improvements are—would be the public investment.
Yes.
Type of invest—there are other types of investments, but you're specifically talking about those that require infrastructure.
Yep, yep. Okay. John?
You were asking, what type of a development do you want to invest in? My first question is, when I looked at—and you're utilizing, I guess, programs that you're familiar with or have had success, Compact Urban Development Project, all this, the thing that gets me is when I read these, unless I misunderstand the language, it always says, "Best potential for redevelopment." And when I look at Pioneer Projects, redevelopment projects supporting, I'm getting back to my same issue, is that—is that what we're supposed to be doing to achieve Envision Eugene is all redevelopment and not new development? I would think these would be applicable, and the language should be changed to show that it can happen anywhere in Eugene. A comment I'd like to make on what Commissioner Lettich has indicated—I'm jumping, but only because it was mentioned—tipping point. Tipping point, when I read this, and I said, "Well, jeez, I wonder what they used in a formula to achieve pricing and tipping point." And usually, if they achieve the higher pricing, it's in a development—in an area where it may cost more to develop it. And by God, again, here we are, Downtown, Midtown, Alamot. We're all back into what I call the big core area. Let me finish.
Yeah, no, no.
And I feel, just as a point, and where my philosophy is going to come from, is tipping points can be done by utilizing a formula to calculate them, determining on what you feel. I feel that tipping points, if you want to use that term, can also be created by the city and what type and form of investments they want to do that will create a tipping point. And you can create a tipping point for someone to do development by those types of incentives, rather than just saying, "This will achieve the higher market rate because you lower the actual cost of development." So that's just a comment, but I would like to get back to the programs of the what type of programs.
Yeah, I just want to respond to that. Councilor—Commissioner Zorsky, I heard you loud and clear at our meeting last time on Friday, the 8th. And that's part of the reason that in having the conversation about what type of development to invest in, the second bullet point here, which I just neglected to bring up before we started the conversation, but this idea of redevelopment versus greenfield development, I think, is a really important question. And you had made the point, well, you know, sure, we certainly could be investing in redevelopment. That makes a lot of sense utilizing under—utilized lands, but for example, in your ward, there is a lot of potential greenfield development. And is there a possibility—I think—in—correct me if I'm wrong, but this seemed to be the question you're asking. Is there a possibility to make community investments into those newer greenfield development sites to improve the quality of the development that happens, to gain certain public benefits, possibly increase the net yield of units or density through those kinds of projects, and achieve the same kinds of goals that we would be achieving through redevelopment? Is—am I correct?
Well, I would assume that the goals for any development are the same, be they redevelopment or not. They're the goals that are in Envision Eugene, I think, that the council wants to see happen. So—and those various pillars. So I don't see how they are different. That's where I'm coming from.
Got you.
Okay?
So you shouldn't be limiting it to redevelopment.
I don't feel so. I mean, when you talk about compact—I'll say you wanted to talk about compact urban development. Compact urban development, as you're indicating, can not only occur in your—let's just use the term Downtown, it can occur in your core areas that are growing, and again, it'll be more compact development. Or it can occur by a vision that says, "If this area is vacant land, what can we do to create a tipping point where we give, you know—I'm getting ahead—bonuses for over four stories to increase density to developers to do that? If it costs more, you give them some sort of an incentive to do that. How can we have this happen, and as I said earlier, have it happen in a positive way so that we don't have issues 10, 20 years from now?" And that's what I'm looking for, this investment strategy, to address, in the whole city.
All right. Thanks. I just wanted to kind of clarify that that's a good question to be on the table, too. Thank you.
Can I ask a clarifying question? So I—maybe you guys have already talked about this, and apologize if I'm repeating myself—or your conversation, but I think the reason that the focus has been on redevelopment is because it is more expensive, and we are relying on redevelopment. We've all—we've figured out that—we've added capacity to all the vacant lands, and there is more likelihood that the vacant lands, the greenfields, can develop without some kind of incentive or investment from—without some kind of push. But I think what—I'm—this is what I'm trying to clarify. What I'm hearing you say is, in order to get something better than what would just happen within the market, is what you would like to see included in this.
I thought that was the whole philosophy involved in Envision Eugene. We're not only going to address these goals of so many units, so many jobs, but we're going to do it in a quality way.
That's correct.
Okay? And so what I'm saying twofold, and it's only my opinion, is I can see you looking at redevelopment because it's needed in order to achieve the overall objectives, but you can't assume that the vacant lands, or whatever, are going to develop because otherwise they wouldn't be vacant now. And second, as I indicated, in the way that you want to achieve the objectives. So just because they—are they zoned the right way? And if they are, will the developer do it? We have lands, I know of, that are zoned for R3, R4, but what are they going to want to build on them? They want to build single-family homes or very small R2s because of costs or other factors? And I'm saying the incentives should be there to build to the capacity that it is either currently zoned, which will also help address the Envision Eugene goals, and do it in a good way, with high-quality materials and whatever.
Yeah, to follow on that, and I have to agree with John, we were—we were all involved in this discussion in the past last week. To follow up, in the same way, I actually felt the single-family options was more appropriate for new development than it is for redevelopment. Obviously, SDUs and those kind of things—I mean, we have—those are already allowed in single-family zones. But if this is some type of housing option that ends up with, you know, maxed-out single-family and it provides housing options, it's a lot easier to do in new development because you need multiple pieces—parcels. I mean, trying to put that together in South Eugene would be a nightmare, it seems to me. I mean, how, you know, how are you going to do cluster housing? Well, it means you can't do one cluster house. You've got to assemble a bunch of parcels, whereas that's not an issue. You've got some new areas that we're going to be—you're going to be working on, that you could take that concept and, you know, flush it out with some areas in some of these new areas and try it out there and work out the bugs. And it would be a lot easier because then you're not fighting, you know, fighting the market and trying to assemble land in an existing area and, you know, where you might get two lots here and one lot over there. Because the single-family options concept really depends on assemblage of land more than one lot. I mean, you know, what are you going to do? You're going to do two rows houses in an existing lot that's big enough to have two units or whatever? So—and I do think that if it turns into asking the question about what type of development we want to invest in, if it's important that we get some good examples of mixed-use multifamily housing on corridors, then that is the target that we really have to be as a primary target for our investments. Again, if we are saying that that is so important for meeting the goals of the Envision Eugene, you know, if it was just a minor part and it was only, you know, 1% of our—but because the way it's laid out, it seems to be a very important core component of meeting our needs now and how we meet it in the future, then you really have to focus your efforts on that, which means the incentives have to be focused on that. And it may very well be that that's not one of the corridors cited. Maybe it's farther ad Coburg or whatever, you know, that is not showing on the drawing now, that—but I think that is the kind of development that really you want to focus your incentives on, not on single-family housing.
That's consistent with our thinking.
Bill?
Well, to kind of tag on to, I think, what Randy and John were talking about earlier and to kind of zero in maybe on the redevelopment versus greenfield, it seems to me that it would be helpful to kind of have a scoring system. And I think Randy alluded to this, and I'm thinking kind of like what's involved with LEED certification, where they have location and linkages and, you know, connection to walkability, those sorts of things, walk scores and that. But also to fold in maybe the either existing public infrastructure that's at that location or near that location, and what costs there would be to either extend it or expand it, and to really fold that all together so that you could help evaluate whether redevelopment or greenfield seems to make more sense in a particular location for some of those incentives. And so I'm just thinking that that way you've got a little better quantitative way of looking at it, rather than just saying, "Well, yeah, this seems like this is close to the tipping point," or whatever, but you've got a way to systematically evaluate that. You can go online and get walk score for just about anything, and it deals with walkability, transit, bicycles, and those sorts of things. But even, you know, a lot of the categories that are involved in LEED are real helpful, too, in this. And so I think that might be a good tool to add to this in just evaluating where we put our efforts.
Rick?
To sort of comment a little bit on what John was talking about, in small communities like ours—I know we like to always point to Portland, but we're not there—developers, when they come in, particularly in a greenfield, will look at land. They have expertises in certain types of development. If it's building two-story wood-framed apartment buildings, that's what they build. You could have an R3 and R4 site, but if you allow it to be built to an R2 density, they're going to build what they know. They're not going to go out on the limb and say, "Gee, I'm going to spend and risk some more money and more time." So I think what John's talking about is if you are going to require a higher density, then be willing to come up with a way to sort of push towards that envelope a little bit harder. You have to be careful because if you try to push too hard, then you won't get anything. One of the things, and I'm going to go back to page five, where we've got our little list of things. One of the challenges I think we face outside our core areas, and Denny's right, we've had success downtown, we know that, but there's been a pot of known funds to deal with, and there's a pot of things that we know. Once you get outside, nobody knows what that pot is, or is there a pot? Do we have monies available? Do we have programs available? We need to really define those so that it can be learned. In Downtown, I mean, Denny, I'm going to guess, but the Downtown tools we've got have been around for three decades?
Some of them go back to the late '60s.
Okay. And we're only starting to see them really used in an efficient way two, three, four decades later. Well, if we're going to do this outside, let's get started so people know, so it's not three or four decades from now before they start showing up at Denny's, Denny's son's door and say—
Hopefully.
Yeah. And say, "What have you got for me?" We don't know what those resources are. I think it's real important that we define what we call limited resources, what's out there to be used. I mean, how do you define where to use them until you know what that pot of— I mean, how do you define where to use them until you know what that pot of, of funds, or what that pot of, of resources are? At that point, then you can prioritize sort of how you're going to spend them. I mean, for me, if you say, what type, this is the, gee, this is what I want, not what I need, what type of development do we want to invest in? Anything that works in Eugene. I mean, we keep kind of pinpointing certain areas, but most of our areas, we have plans, we're not seeing anything come out of the grounds yet. Where do we want to invest? Sort of where we get the best bang for our buck? And maybe that's more multifamily, maybe that's in some of our commercial areas that really can be pushed up a little bit more. I think as an example, you go out Santa Clara, there's a lot of development land out there that's sitting with nothing on it, or horribly underutilized, and you have a large population. We keep talking about downtown, but do we want that population, if we only invest in downtown, then what we're asking that population is to come all the way downtown to do everything? We can intensify our kind of urban areas by looking at spot areas to do. Which tools? Anyone we can get. One of the ones that dawned on me, and after our meeting about a week and a half ago on this with our subcommittee, I spent a few hours going online, and Googling incentives, and really incentives, and everything else, and I found it real interesting, most every area that you actually read about, where they've actually had success, there's a big pot of money attached to it, and the cities come up with monies to do things all the time. I'm going to gather we don't have that resource. And it was interesting, it's not that somebody else came in and we gave them waived SDCs, or we let their permits slide through quicker and cheaper, or something, that didn't seem to really make anything happen, at least by what I read, now there's a whole lot more areas out there. And I think one of the things that dawned on me, we talk about land assemblage, from the work I do, lenders don't like vacant land. They don't like loaning on vacant land. It scares them, because it doesn't produce anything. You talk about assemblage of things, one of the things that the city may consider is, can we put together some capital funds that we actually loan somebody for land assemblage, they can then go get their project built, and then they pay back the city based on that, maybe with a small return. Even if we got no return on that money, and all that money kept doing was rolling over, it still might get some things done. I think Steve was mentioning when we talked about South Atlanta, most of the lots out there are 50 to 60 feet wide, well, you're not going to get much road development on a 60-foot-wide site, if you have to have five feet of setback on both sides, and by the time it is gone, you get two units. Well, maybe what you're thinking about is you want to get two, that means I've got to go out and buy two existing properties that I can find, that the improvement really doesn't add much value, but I can't do that as soon as I tell the lender, oh, by the way, I'm going to tear those houses down. Oh, we don't, we're not touching you goodbye. So you've got to find a way to fund those things to get them started. Once you can show a success story in a community, then you're going to have banks up and go, hey, this is working, I like this, it happens, particularly if you can get a bank to loan you money short-term, because I'm going to sell those row houses off to individuals and pay off their loan. They really like those fast payoffs, they get big yields out of those things. So, again, I think, in a small way, we're looking at small projects, I don't think we're going to be looking to a land assembly project, where somebody comes in and builds a $40 million property. If we get a few row houses built, and we start these things, I think we're going to see a success after that. Thanks.
Back to John.
Yeah, I just wanted to comment that, I, the way that I understand, Robin, what's being presented here, I, I think I would have had a whole different perspective if, if this had been presented to me and said, we're coming, we haven't, we want to do redevelopment, it's essential for what we need to do in order to achieve Envision Eugene's goals. These are some programs, and all the things we're going to talk about in the priority areas for redevelopment. And then later, we're going to come back to you, maybe with the same programs, or similar programs, you know, or some new programs with that toolbox, for areas that aren't redevelopment. I would have felt more comfortable. Right now, I'm confused, because I'm thinking, once this toolbox is done, that's it for everything, and to me, it doesn't include everything. I guess that's where I'm coming from. Trying to make it more clear every time, but I don't know if I am.
I, I understand what you're saying, and, and I think that's why Robin kind of broadened the, the conversation, to be able to pick up things like that.
Yes.
We've, we've heard you, and I think we understand.
Okay.
Those are the 10 answers we want. Steve?
Yeah, I was, I wanted to get back to applying the concepts to the investment strategies, or thinking about it in South Atlanta as an example. So, here, here's, here's, here we have a situation where we probably need underground utilities, right, to make things, make some of this work. So, we need to get an idea of what that's going to cost, and if, you know, if the city's going to pay for that, or UWEB's going to pay for that, or the property owners are going to pay for that. I mean, we have a situation where we have basically, single-story retail buildings, and all we're trying to do is get some redevelopment, where some of the older buildings, I mean, we probably know some examples of them, might come out, and then you'd replace them with a multi-story building with a couple of, a couple of floors of apartments above, maybe they're not the full height you'd like to see, but that would be dramatically improvement of what we have. So, you know, what would be, you know, what would be needed to facilitate that? I mean, in other words, you figure out what you're trying to get, and what are, what are the potential stumbling blocks? The, the concept of the shared parking, well, how might that be achieved? Well, maybe it's achieved by buying up some single-family properties, and, and creating a shared parking lot behind the commercial on, you know, that backs up against, I'm just throwing these things out. In other words, you might have to sacrifice some of your housing for some of the other goals, and there's obviously going to be a cost associated with that, if, if you ended up, you know, buying land, if the, if the city is involved in partially facilitating that, or doing a joint venture with, you know, or whatever. I, again, I don't know how that would work, but just trying to take it back and tie it down to the specific area where we, you know, it's very clear what's missing there. You've got single-family, I mean, single-story retail, almost exclusively, the whole length, you know, a bunch of older buildings, and nothing too fancy, you know, some things that are, obviously aren't going to be redeveloped, you know, at the end of, you know, the new development at the, at the PC market, and so forth, but, just think through what are the problems, and, and you might end up coming up with some investment strategies that aren't sort of on your normal thing. Well, I mean, does that mean we have to cajole UWEB to fund some undergrounding that they don't really want to do? You know, and how successful have you been in the past in getting them to do that? And where, where might that be most successful along this strip, you know, just as an example?
Hey, Robin, could you explain something? On page three, there's a comment here that says, only the two highlighted categories are required for state approval of the Eugene Road Strategy, and that's the compact urban development.
Oh, yes, yeah.
SDU.
Yeah, sure.
But why isn't anything more required, and why are these two things required?
Well, it has to do with the capacity analysis, and how much capacity Eugene has on vacant land, and redevelopment potential, and that sort of thing. So, looking ahead, there are two main things that we're trying to accomplish through efficiency measures, and one of them is to get more multifamily development inside the UGB, and it's because one of the main goals, of course, is to fit all the multifamily capacity for the next 20 years inside the existing current urban growth boundary. And we have a, an unmet need of about 1,600 multifamily units, and so that's, that's why that one is front and center.
I see, okay, that's how you're categorizing this?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, and then the, the secondary dwelling units, we've also said that in order to minimize UGB expansion for single-family housing, we need to do a few things, and, and the secondary dwelling units is one of just a couple of things that we can do to get some more capacity on that.
I understand, yeah.
Okay. Great.
Question maybe for Denny on this one. TIF's tax increment financing districts has always been a defined geographic area.
Yes.
If, is there a way to use a tool similar to that, to accumulate funds if redevelopment occurs in such a way that fits the Envision Eugene pillars, but it's not geographic, it's more Eugene-based, where you could show that that wouldn't have occurred, or we somehow funded it, but now that we funded it, we want to take the TIF as a tool, and pull those funds to sort of create a fund use that sort of grows on itself, sort of like urban renewal downtown? Is there a way to do that, or do you have to then say, the TIF district has to be near the growth boundary? Did it make sense what I was trying to ask?
Yeah, I think...
I'm trying to get a way to, how do we create sort of a bank that we can generate funds, that then we can use later on to generate more of the things we want?
Right. I think there is an example here, and it's a little bit inverse of what you're talking about, and I can't remember the term that Robin uses here, but basically that we would front-load some of those infrastructure costs for a project that would not have gone forward otherwise, and then we take the tax increment from that project to replenish whatever investment we make upfront. So it's, it's another way of accomplishing tax increment financing without having a district. For example, we could, we could use the general fund as an example, to pay SDCs for a project as an incentive, knowing that when that project starts to pay taxes, we can recover that investment that we've made upfront for, for those SDCs. So, it's another way of basically accomplishing tax increment financing without having to have a district.
So, in, say, an example that John has used, where they've got some R4 land out there that may be developed at R2, could there be a way to use something, again, I don't know what the dollars would be spent on, but use monies that would get the developer to both increase maybe the density, but also increase the quality of the project, and somehow get a repayment back at some point in the future, maybe with, because they've been able to increase rents, because they got this project, or whatever else it might be?
I think the challenge, and I think you, you pointed to it, is, how do we establish that fund, so that we can make those investments upfront? And it would just, it would take a commitment to, to do that somehow, and urban renewal establishes that fund.
Right.
And, and there would be, need to be some other mechanism, and that's, that's the challenge, is finding that pot of money, so to speak.
And is that something that is legislated by the state that allows cities to use that? Directs the city how to create these?
Yeah, urban rural districts are authorized by state statute, yeah, and they're very specific.
And how about the TIF districts?
Well, that, that is, the urban rural is a tax increment financing district, yes.
Denny, in that same regard, the Department of Housing or Urban Development, with their community development block grants, has revolving fund money available for job creation, anything available for land assembly and investment that gets paid back?
We've done all different kinds of things with our economic development funds that are in the block grant program. Land acquisition is one of those, it's not the...
That's for low-income housing purposes.
Well, we do it for low-income housing, but we also do, we've also done it for economic development. It's not the most popular use of those funds, because our revolving fund, loan fund tends to be shorter-term transactions, so if you're doing real estate financing, that's usually a 20-year kind of, and we usually don't like to invest that long, because it takes too long for the money to come back into the revolve. But we have done it, we can do it. The other problem, when you start to get into real estate, you're talking about, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars, and we have a pretty small fund, so it can only reach so far, it's, it's really limited, yes.
Any other questions?
We're right at break time, if there aren't, so.
Well, Robin, Denny, thank you very much. Patricia, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are we going to ever continue on this chair?
Let's clarify.
Oh, okay, good. So we got, we got done the what?
Well, next, next steps.
Maybe.
Here's the next step.
We didn't get the where, the where and which tools?
Where and which tools.
That's Robin.
Well, so here's, here's the next step. So we have some ideas here, we're going to continue gathering feedback and talking about these. Essentially, what ultimately we would like to have is narrowing down some criteria, where we want to invest, the tools we want to use, and put something out there that says, okay, here's something that people sound workable, now what do we think about this? So we're, I guess we're going to go from the broad to the specific, and so we will be coming back to you with something undoubtedly more specific next time we talk.
If, if there are comments the commissioners would have liked to admit today, or if something crosses their mind in the next week or two, can they share those with you?
Please email me, call me, talk to me at any, at any point if you have ideas or thoughts.
Yeah, I just, just to comment real quickly, when you, at least what I'm able to Google, this list is pretty extensive, I mean, I didn't really find things out that other people have come up with, that weren't pretty much this list of things. Like I said, those cities have got big pots of money that they're willing to spend, big pots of money to get things done. So we just need to have a big pot of money.
Yes. Jack, Carolyn?
I don't have any ideas on that.
Come on, you're the leader.
Okay, items from staff?
I sent out notes from our retreat, I didn't hear back from anybody with any additions or changes, so I'll assume they're good.
And in that same regard, I sent you all an email today, and I've got hard copies to share with you, so let me pass these out. Out of the retreat, you know, we decided, we talked about what we might ought to do, John, with topics that either have been raised by commission members, or members of the public, that haven't worked their way into the current work program. We talked about putting them in the parking lot, or in the bin, or something, and so John Belcher and Steve and I quickly just came up with an idea, and, and just to get things started, this is the timeline on how I would suggest that we submit these ideas for consideration by this planning commission. I think it's pretty self-explanatory, the deadlines are on there, because, you know, we wanted to set aside a specific meeting for this on June 24th, and if we're going to be doing the research ourselves on this stuff, I think we need a couple of months' worth of time to do that. So, that's, that's the timeline. The one outstanding issue that, that we didn't come to a conclusion on, John was suggesting that this bin be posted on the planning department's website, and we had some discussion about the pros and the cons of doing something like that. And so out of courtesy for John, since he isn't here, I'm going to suggest that we bring this, this idea up at some point in the future, and kind of flesh it out, the merits of either putting it on the website, or in the Dropbox, or how that can create public expectations, or just with the purpose of, John's point is for transparency, obviously, but with the mechanics of all that means. So any, any questions about the bin thing?
Just that I, I thought it made sense to wait till John is here to discuss it in more detail.
The website?
Yeah, the public, the exposure of the...
Yeah, yeah, but let's, let's go with getting the ideas in front of us, so that we have time to consider. Anything else from the commission?
Rick? A comment on, on Robin sending us that information ahead of time, I thought that was a real efficient way to handle it, I mean, if you notice, we didn't go through all the slides, but we were all there, ready to go, and I thought that was a much better use of our time.
Yep, well done, everybody's prepared.
We'll do that whenever possible.
So our next meeting is next Monday, same time, same place. With that, we're joined.